Yep, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the calling of which stands one nation, God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Village of Washingtonville Board Work Session, Zoom Meeting, today, Monday, July 6th. Just a few announcements. Just want to congratulate the Washingtonville Class of 2020, Superintendent Larry Washington, Brian Connolly, the High School Principal. Everything that they planned, along with some parent groups, went flawlessly. I know that there were some doubters out there, but I guess they're supposed to be. It was truly an amazing day in the Village of Washingtonville. McLaughlin Square has been completed with new planting, still waiting on the completion of the police booth, which is in the process of being painted. Once painted, it will be installed on the new concrete pad. Received a few telephone calls regarding the fountain that malfunctioned, that memorial pond, notified the company, hoping they're up here by the end of the week to fix it. Farmers' Artisan Market of Washingtonville will open July 19th from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The location is at Vern Allen Park. The theme is "Family Picnic." Orange and Rockland will be installing new smart meters during the month of July. Please visit our homepage on the Facebook postings that lists the streets that will receive the smart meters first. As I get new information on the additional streets and dates, I will be posting them on the Facebook page, which goes again to our homepage. Phase 4 is scheduled to open tomorrow in our region. We're hoping to open up Village Hall to the public and have our meetings in person. I do not know when this will happen. I know there are many residents who are waiting patiently to attend. If any residents would share their concerns over cleanliness of our village, please do not hesitate to contact the Village Hall at 496-3221, or my direct line at 496-2555. We still have some potholes and some concrete sidewalk that need some fixing. We're working on that schedule right now. I want to thank all the residents, village employees, and village board for everything they have done during these times of uncertainty. Thank you. Going to our agenda. Resolution, trustee Ladato, Facility Use Request Form, Forever Fit with Gammie?
Yes, I have a facility use request form from Forever Fit with Gammie to use the Vern Allen Park for some additional days for Zumba. She wanted Sundays throughout July and August because there's been a really a lot of good feedback. She's had a good number of people show up.
And if it rains, they're just going to cancel that week and just next week?
Because it's on a Sunday, so you know. And it is-
Yesterday was packed.
Say that again?
I heard yesterday there were a lot of people.
Yes, she had turnout. She was very happy, and they were all asking for more classes, so she didn't want to say no.
Yes. Paul missed it, but hopefully he could join in at the next one.
You never know.
Along with Rich. We're just deciding on what color to wear.
Oh, there you go. Coordinate.
We're going to.
I don't know if we need to vote on that first before I go to the next one, but the dates are available. The dates and times, Gammie picked 8 o'clock in the morning on Sunday, so from 8 to 9.
Okay.
And I sent to you guys her updated Certificate of Liability Insurance Form, where the holder is listed as the Village of Washingtonville as opposed to Vern Allen Park in the old one.
Right.
So that's all good now.
I think that was the only holdup that we had.
That was it.
Yep. Think it's great. Our parks are being used. That's what we want.
A lot, which is good.
Yes.
Should I mention the next one? Do we vote on both, or do we do them individually?
I think we need to do them individually. So let's make a motion for... You want to do A first?
You mean Forever Fit with Gammie, that?
Yes. So someone want to make a motion? Is there any discussions on this? Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it, now that I'm unmuted.
Roll call, Deputy Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Trustee Sampson?
Yes.
Trustee Klor?
Yes.
Trustee Ladato? Yes. So 5-0. Okay. Make a resolution for letter B.
That's the Facility Use Request Form from Yoga Raise. It's Rachel O'Reilly. She actually did one in June. I believe it was June 28th, and it was a hit. She wanted to add more days, a few Sundays and Wednesdays. So Sundays from 9:30 to 11:00, only because she has to set up, so it's really 10 to 11:00, but she'd like to get there a little earlier. And then Wednesdays, I listed the dates, July 8th, 22nd, August 5th, and 19th, from 7:00 to 8:30 in the evening. That's a Wednesday, though. And again, those dates are free on the village calendar at Vern Allen Park.
Would Sunday interfere with Gammie, no?
No, it's actually right. We coordinated it, so one fell right after the other. Gammie's done at 9:00.
Well, she's done at 9:00. What time does she start?
8:00. You got to get up early.
It's not even going to see Gammie.
I don't think you're going to see the 9:30 one.
She's got the trip!
Lot of people were there. I liked it. I rolled out of bed for it, but maybe I'll try.
Any questions on yoga classes? Okay, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, Deputy Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Trustee Sampson?
Yes.
Trustee Klor?
Yes.
Trustee Ladato?
Yes.
5-0. Okay. Discussion with the update Facility Use Request Form.
So I, after working with a lot of these groups and organizations, using this form, which I think is kind of archaic, it doesn't really have that much information on it, and I did some research with other municipalities, what they use. I just wanted it to be easier for anyone who comes into the village, who wants to run something at a park, whether an event or, you know, anything where they wouldn't have to ask us so many questions. I don't mind answering questions, but I just feel bad because I know everybody has, you know, time is very valuable. So this is our... I'm going to try to cover this lady's phone number. This is the old one. It's very, you know, it's like five questions. There's no letterhead. I'm a stickler for letterhead. Where is this form from? It's from the village. So I created this with... I sent you guys with more information on it. It does have the contact person's, you know, cell phone number, address, email, so various ways to get in touch with them. And then I put a checklist of the parks or the municipal lot, you know, so their choice of what they wanted to use, and a listed area for dates and times. So just a little bit more information. And then I did include on the bottom that we do need a copy of their Certificate of Liability Insurance, because a lot of people are not aware of that. So I would just get, or we all would get this in our mail, just this with nothing, and then we'd have to, you know, fish for the rest of the paperwork, which is not the applicant's fault. They just didn't know. So I wanted to know if you guys would be okay with this new form.
Needs an update, so thank you for that.
And if you think there's any additional information that needs to be added to this, I did at the top put a formal, you know, information about, we would like these requests four weeks prior. Of course, we know that doesn't always happen, but I'm just, you know, just a formality to include that. In a perfect world, that would be, you know, easy planning, but that's not always the case.
All right, everyone have a chance to look at that form? Everyone's good? Any questions, additions?
No, I like it. Thank you, Val, for taking the initiative to update it.
No problem.
Thank you, Val. Okay, so we have a motion to adopt a new form for facilities.
Sure, motion.
Deputy Mayor Lang made the motion. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Sampson, roll call, Deputy Mayor Lang, trustee Sampson?
Yes.
Trustee Klor?
Yes.
Trustee Ladato? Mayabucco. Yes. Okay, 5-0.
I'll send it to the webmaster. Is that okay?
Yep. Before, you know, it has agenda items could change. I received a phone call last week from a gentleman, Chris Wilker, who manages a baseball team 10 and under, the Hudson Valley Hawks. They are looking to play some of their games at Woodfield. I asked him to talk to Dave Marino, because we did give out a permit for Little League. They're looking to schedule five games. Now it's baseball. I did explain to him that there's no pitcher's mound there, and they were okay. They will bring a pitcher's mound in, portable one. They're looking to schedule five games, the first one beginning on July 24th, the second one July 29th, August 5th, August 7th, and then one on August 12th. He has been in touch with Dave Marino. They will work something out for game, you know, so they could use the field. If not, they will go someplace else, possibly Maze Field. So I said I would bring it up to tonight's board, at least for the first the first game, July 24th. He's going to be sending me his insurance, the insurance for the program, and I said I'll bring it up tonight to see if the board is willing to let them use the field different than the softball field. He has... I told him he has to fill out a facility use, so that's great. We could start getting the new one out to him. Again, our fields are being used. And again, they would have to fill out the form that I'm going to be receiving tomorrow from Blooming Grove with all of the steps that they need to take to keep everyone safe. All right, and that goes out to the Board of Health. My conversation today with Town Supervisor Droulman mentioned to me that he will ask his secretary to send it out to me tomorrow, and I will forward it on to both Little League, because they might have filled one out for Blooming Grove, for Maze Field, but they also need to fill one out for Woodfield. So... And again, the Hudson Valley Hawks will get that form, and they still need to follow all the protocol that everyone has to follow. So can I have a motion? Go ahead.
How do we know that they confirmed the date and the time, so it doesn't conflict with Little League?
Well, we're going to go by their word right now, okay? And if it does, Little League comes first, because we did promise them the field first.
All right. Now, will Little League account to us, or will we have to reach out to Little League just to-
Well, I'm going to try to set up a meeting with Dave and Chris together, so we could really have them face to face to make sure that dates are okay with Little League.
Okay, all right. I just don't want to see too-
No, I don't want to have any, you know, it's my time. It's my time to use the field.
Right.
Where is this team out of?
Washingtonville.
What league?
Not the whole team, okay? But I do know, I did talk to an employee today of the village whose son is playing on the scene.
What league? You know, like Little League is Little League. What do they win?
I don't know. Good question.
American Legion?
No, it's filed. I would think it falls under the umbrella of Little League.
Well, it either is or it isn't.
Yeah. American Legion doesn't take place at-
They have insurance and stuff like that, right?
Yeah.
Never heard of them.
It's... I don't know if it's brand new, or it could be in the second year. Hudson Valley Hawks?
It's a travel baseball team?
Travel baseball team.
If it's like American Heritage Girls, and then there's Girl Scouts, maybe it's something separate like that?
It looks like Orange and Rockland County. I don't see anything outside of that. So I don't... I wouldn't say it's national, right?
No, no. Travel leagues pop up all the time, you know. This is the first request that we got outside of Washingtonville Little League, okay? But they have to be governed by Little League, and they're 10 years old.
We don't know that.
But we don't know that. So I will find that out. You know, like I said, their first game, they want to start July 24th. We do have a meeting prior to that.
Going to wait until then, until we find out?
Well, I could gather all the information, but I like to say that board is ready to go, but we need all of this other information. Board is ready to go for you to use the field, pending conversation with Little League.
And pending their insurance certificate.
And pending their insurance.
What about the concession stand?
I don't believe they'll be using concession stand or bathrooms, which is going to be another conversation. Conversation I had with, I think it was Rob today regarding the bathrooms, that they might have to hire somebody to clean the bathrooms between somebody leaving, someone coming in. If that's the case, I don't think we're in a position to do that, okay? So I don't know what the alternative is, other than a porta potty.
That's the difference.
Right, exactly. Paul just says, how could that be more sanitary than the bathrooms that he's trying, but...
Were you able to ask that today? I know that going off with the farmer's market? About the bathrooms, can they be-
It would probably be the same thing, that we would have to get a porta potty.
Okay. I still don't understand that, but...
I don't understand the calls that we have, because everything just keeps changing.
Yeah.
That's Paul's phone going off. He's-
On the front door.
He's trying. He's trying. He's trying to find the off button. And now he's off the screen. That was a frozen picture of Paul.
Coming back in a minute.
Be red. He's as red as my shirt right now. So I like to, you know, tell them which way, you know, the board is going, you know, depending if we get all of this information and the facility forms filled out properly, are we okay with it?
I am.
So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion. Pending everything you said.
Pending everything, correct. Second?
Yes.
One more quick question?
Yep.
So let's just talk about the bathroom issue. What happens if a porta potty has to come in? We don't have to pay for it, do we?
No.
Okay.
No. I think we're all in agreement with that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Trustee Sampson?
Yes.
Trustee Klor?
Yes.
Trustee Ladato?
Yes.
Okay, 5-0. Okay.
There he is.
Moving on to item 3D, Discussion Water, Sewer, and Facilities Fees and Billing. With us here at the Village Hall, I will put the camera on him, Mike Aiello from Delaware Engineering. He's going to get up and say a few words, right? You don't have to.
I can.
Tracy is somewhere.
There she is. Tracy written on.
Oh, sorry, Tracy. I'm sorry. We also have-
Right in the middle of the Brady Bunch here.
Tracy, also from Delaware Engineering.
Yes. Real briefly, rather than go through the report word for word, as the board had a chance to review the report from March, which in summary was analysis and evaluation of water, of the village's water and sewer utilities, along with its rate structuring, followed by some considerations and recommendations that we Delaware Engineering have made. Before I get too far into it, I guess I think everybody's had a chance to review it. I don't know if everybody has or not, but it's easy to jump into the weeds and go off on some tangent, so I'll just kind of throw that out there. Does the board have anything in... Specifically, they want me to address, or any questions or clarifications from Tracy, or I, to start things off?
Yeah, where did you get these numbers? On Table 6? You had the projected revenue-
Page 21.
Operating and Maintenance Force?
Yep.
It says the preliminary budget from 2021, but I didn't see those numbers on it.
Tracy, did you-
Those were the budget from 2019 to 2020, and what we had done was used the billing for two quarters. The issue with the billing quarters was fitting it into your fiscal year. So these are probably not going to show exactly what you came up with as we were doing a model based on what information we had.
So this says 2021, so this is actually 19 to 20.
My table on page 21 says 2019 to 2020.
Mine says 20 to 21.
On-
21?
Page 21, Table 6.0.
Table 6.
Yep.
Mike, what did you say?
20 to 21.
Yeah, preliminary water fund budget, 2020 to 2021.
Oh, below the table?
Yes.
Okay.
On the website.
That might be the case, then, that the budget was from that time, and the revenue was from previous, as we had the already known. I don't have that budget in front of me right now, but I can look it up if you want me to check it.
What I had given Delaware is the first, second, third quarter, and fourth quarter, actually. And that's where they came up with the models, the model numbers. I'm assuming. Stop me when I'm-
Yes.
That's correct.
You know, when I'm wrong. And so that's what they went off of, but like you said, it's really, it's a guess right now.
Well, yeah, it's educated estimation. The revenue was worked off, and it was based on assumption that your quarters were fairly consistent. So we had two quarters of revenue, and multiplied it by two to get to four, get a full year. Can't imagine it's off by too much. I'm sure it isn't exact to the penny or even the dollar, but I'm sure it's pretty close.
So what you guys are saying here is, Tracy and Mike, you're saying that we're charging too much. From what I got, as I'm looking around, rounding. I mean, if you go to the bottom of page 21, where you say the facility charge is $15 times the number of assigned building charge, and then we go over to page 22, is put in both the water and sewer debt. The facility fees go into its own fund.
Goes into its own fund, but it's supposed... It's directly earmarked for water and sewer debt. Is that correct?
What we need, yeah.
Right. I think that-
In that case, the facility charge was not meeting the budget for debt, and the water use charge was overcharging for water and sewer use. Two big things, two big takeaways there on the rate is that village law and general municipal law specify that water and sewer budgets are separate. The funds are separate, and sewer cannot be charged related to water. They have to be separate. So here, in the current structure, you're charging sewer use based on the billed water amount. It should be based on the actual water consumption to have them be separate budgets. Right now, if you move your water budget, your sewer budget moves too, which is probably how you, you know, got into this.
All right, Tracy, say what you just said again, because that was another issue I had reading this on the facility fee, on the sewer. It's based on the actual consumption.
The facility fee, the facility charges for debt, and that's a flat of 15 per quarter, right? For your usage fees, your sewer is 1.5 times the water bill, and that's not allowed under the current general municipal law. What you would want to be doing is saying, for the usage amount of water to meet my budget, my water fee is this, and then if my sewer budget is this, divide that by the sewer use, then my sewer bill is calculated separately based on how much water was used. That's fine, but not as a multiple of what your water bill was.
It's all right now. The sewer rate is arbitrarily set at the water rate, as opposed to an independent analysis of what the village needs to meet its sewer expenses.
Operation and maintenance, right?
Operations, operational expenses. It's just arbitrarily set at 1.5 times the water rate, which is based on usage, but instead of just taking the two independently and saying, we actually got into it, as far as a recommendation or an option, the, on Table Table 6.1 on page 23. Right now, the water, your water rate is $3.50 per 1,000 gallons, and your sewer rate is-
It's 1.5 times-
50% times that, which is $5.25 per 1,000 gallons. But when you look at the revenue that both bring in and compare it to the, your expenses, expenses or budget, we can... The sewer rate could be as low as $4.35 per 1,000 gallons when you independently look at what your budget is, and the sewer, excuse me, the water rate could drop to $2.68 per 1,000 gallons. The difference between the two is not 150... Water is more, it's still more than sewer, sorry. Sewer is still more than water, however, it's just not arbitrarily set at a predetermined figure, and it's cleaned 150%.
So you're saying that sewer rate can change each quarter?
Well, not necessarily each quarter, but I'm sure every year. I guess you can change it. Tracy can-
Every two years is what you're crying-
But it should be independently analyzed, as opposed to saying-
And that would be fine, to, you know, to take a look every two years and say, are we still meeting budget based on the rate we set? The thing to keep in mind here is that your facility charge, we did find, falls short a little bit for your debt, and in consideration of future debt for your wastewater treatment plant improvements, you could be charging more in the future for your debt while lowering your operation and maintenance charges for each user, and the customer will see a little bit of lowering, but you could still cover your future debt for the wastewater treatment plant. So you're not in a horrid situation. You can actually do some balancing. Take a little off of the operation and maintenance to make it tighter into your budget and your actual water use for water, separate from sewer. And then there's several options for increasing facility charge or, you know, other options for raising that debt to cover your capital improvement costs.
And in your estimations, you didn't, it is not included on the on page 25, what that facility fee would be?
It's in here... Yeah, it is. It's on page 23. Facility charge, it's a second to last paragraph. You're to say that the amount budgeted for capital debt for water and sewer totaled 181 and a little bit. To get to a better current debt, you could divide that budgeted amount by the current number of total assigned units, which is your, you know, units for your- which is your, you know, units for your, your billing. Um, and what would you would come up with then is sixty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents per unit, per year, which would be a sixteen dollar and seven cents charge per unit per quarter versus your fifteen now. Then in the future, um, depending on how you will be financing your wastewater treatment plant's improvements, that would be raised. But the point we wanted to make was if you're lowering operation and maintenance costs to better meet your current budget without exceeding it tremendously, um, you would be lowering the operation and maintenance side and raising the, the debt side. And the customer would see, and the average customer would see us, a, a lowering in their overall bill, but you would actually be raising those funds for capital improvement.
By only a dollar, a quarter?
No, there's a.
Current debt, we, you have to look at what.
Yeah, this is the current debt, make, you know, this would better meet your current budget because your debt budget fell a little short. Um, but then further, uh, I gotta find the future debt. There's a future debt, at appendix D as well. There's, um, a table looking at future debt possibilities for how, how to pay for that.
Right there.
And, and that also has the. Oh, okay, here too, on page, hold on, pa- on page twenty-five at the bottom. Um, annual future calculated cost per single family home for water at two dollars and sixty-eight cents per thousand gallons and sewer at four dollars and thirty-five per thousand gallons. Operation and maintenance plus facility charges, including the wastewater expansion, could be for the average single family home, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-five cents. Whereas the current total charge annual for a family is seven hundred and seventy-seven. So even if you raise the debt, um, to meet that future, future debt, you're also lowering the operation and maintenance to tighten that budget and revenue. So the overall single family, average, single family home would see a, a slight decrease in their bill.
What?
And you would be making the budget.
On, on the annual, on a payback, on page twenty-five, the annual current calculated cost and the future calculated, what usage are you basing that on?
Um, the two dollars and sixty-eight cents per thousand gallons is the same usage. When we do a model, we basically make a, make a mathematical calculation. Here's the usage that you have now. Here's what you're charging now. Here's your revenue. We put in a different mathematical equation. Basically, for, for this water usage rate at two dollars and sixty-eight cents, I calculated the overall budget divided by how much water was used and that came up to be how much you would get for a thousand gallons. Um, I do not know how the three point five came up. That wasn't part of what we were looking at. But under this estimation, based on your budget and the number of gallons that were used in that same two billing cycles, um, two dollars and sixty-eight cents would cover that current budget. Um, and the sewer, same thing. The budget you have for your sewer system, divided by the number of gallons that were used, comes up to four dollars and thirty-five cents. So their water and sewer are calculated separately. They're based on the total usage, dividing, you know, into that total budget so that you come up with that, that base rate independently of each other. But they're both based on consumption of water, which makes sense. Your water system, you're consuming water in the house. Sewer system, you're flushing that water down the toilet or you're watering your lawn, you know, things like that. So it is, you know, you can base both on water consumption.
All right. Maybe it's just me and maybe I have to go and, and sit down with her.
Well, if you would like to, go ahead, sit down and come up with some specific questions, you can give me a phone call.
No, no, what, but it's, but I, I'm just, I'm, I'm still stuck on this. Annual future calculated cost for single hu- family home for water, two sixty-eight per thousand and sewer four thirty-five per thousand, operation and maintenance plus facility charges. And it doesn't say that's specifically what that facility charge is, including wastewater, wastewater treatment plant expansion. The average home would pay seven hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-five cents.
Right, and I think that's in, um, that's in appendix D. Go to appendix D.
Okay.
There's a chart there.
Yep.
I got, I gotta find it too. It's way in the back. It's the second to last appendix. And the future debt is meaning how would we, you know, cover your, your, your wastewater treatment plant, um, improvement costs?
We're figuring that the cost to pay back our loan will be about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
Okay, I just found it. Let me see what I came up with. Um.
And we came up, Rich, right, for sixty-five dollars a quarter would more or less.
So how much were you planning on borrowing? And, and if you have a grant, what we did was, um, base this on the future capital of seven million, six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for the future sewer. And we added the current annual budget for debt of water and sewer to that future. And that's what we're calling the future annual. Um, a biannual payment, um, if you, if that's a thirty-year term. Um, this is on page one thirty-one of one thirty-seven, if any of you are digital. Um, we just chose a, a, an approximation of a thirty-year loan at two percent interest. And in that case, your biannual payment would be, uh, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And, you know, two times a year, that would be three hundred and forty thousand dollars and three hundred and four, three hundred and forty thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty-nine, uh, dollars total for your debt in that future instance. Added to your current, that's five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars annually. You divide that amount by your facility charge and you have, um, a hundred and eighty dollars for a single, the average single family home per year, based on that unit charge and your quarterly facility charge to cover this future debt would be forty-five dollars. But like we said, that would be raising your facility charge to cover your debt, but you'd also at the same time be lowering your operation and maintenance. So that average family would see maybe a yearly water sewer bill of fifty dollars less.
Tracy.
Go ahead, Rich.
Dollar figure is off.
Excuse me? I couldn't hear you.
It's a ten million.
Yes.
Million dollar.
Okay, and, you know, we can do that too. Um, at the point, I was assuming that there's a loan. The information I had was that the seven thousand, six hundred and, seven million, six hundred and fifty-three thousand was a loan from EFC and that there was an available grant for three million, two hundred and forty thousand. So that's where I, I calculated on the seven million dollars as the loan.
Now, we gotta go at, at ten million, five low interest, five no interest, plus the, um, the three million, three point two million in grant.
Okay, so the grant is there, but the cost for the loan is ten, okay?
Now, with, and those numbers hopefully are going to be a lot less, which, which we will know by the end of this month. Because it should be complete by the end of this month. And we would have to, like, I have to make a payment of twenty-two thousand, seven thirty-four for the short-term loan, uh, interest payment, uh, August first and a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar payment in November. But we're not going to be paying back the four hundred and fifty thousand till next October. That's going to be our first payment for that part, for that portion of the loan.
And which is, um, and that's all for the new wastewater treatment plant?
Yes.
How about your current water and wastewater debt? Is how, uh, when is that going to be met?
It's a roll. Is there any current debt that gets rolled, initially gets rolled over into this?
No, no, no. So the wastewater debt that we're talking about is this.
Okay, um, we had in your budget, a current annual debt for both sewer and for water.
The water is another question. We have one more year on, uh, we have two.
One more year.
To make.
Great.
More payments to make on that.
Okay, um, what I can do then, if, um, you said zero, zero interest for thirty years?
No, it's two percent.
Oh, the, the ten million is two percent?
Yes.
Okay, so I can just.
It's gonna be five million at two percent.
And then five million at zero percent.
Five million at zero percent.
Okay.
At the, we have the grant.
Okay, so I can just recalculate that and send that back to you. The idea is still the same. You're, you're going to be raising a, if you continue to want to use a facility charge to cover debt, your annual facility charge is going to go up. But if you're tightening your budget on, on water and usage and your sewer use budget tighter, then that operation and maintenance cost goes down. So actually, you're in a good spot because the customer will not see that much difference. And in fact, will still see a little bit, a less of a charge.
I, I think the thought process was for the next five years, our operation, uh, and maintenance is going to be just monthly charges for the, you know, for the sewer, the operators and the chemicals and, and Orange and Rockland, you know, are, are, yeah, everything works down there. So Orange and Rockland bills have gone up, and that's our electric supplier. Um, so raising it to sixty-five, Rich and I, you know, have discussed the sixty-five dollars per quarter will bring us to the four fifty a year, based on the eighteen hundred meters. Um, but maybe it's not that much because we can take some from the sewer. All right, because that operations maintenance is going to be significantly lower.
Yeah, and I, I think that needs to be looked at, um, you know, again, with a little more detail, I can help you with that. But the, the idea is there, if you tighten your budgets and your revenues for operation and maintenance, then the average person sees a lower charge there.
Well, I, I think everyone's gonna like that. I, I like that.
Facility charge, you know, it's, it's gonna go like this. But, you know, in general, it'll be a little bit lower annually.
Now, here's a question that Mike and I, uh, you know, spoke about before. The facility fee, we're just saying it's for the sewer. What about the water?
There should be an independent.
There should be.
There should be two facility fees, one for water, one for sewer, correct, Tracy? There should be two.
Yeah, that's better to keep them separate that way. And it's also easier to change it when one is, one is finished and the other one's going on for thirty years. If they're separate, it's, it's easier for you to maintain that, that budget idea and change.
How do we do that? How, how do we do that? Can you give, you know, do you have any suggestions? Is there any clients that you have that's already doing that?
Either way, your, your current, your codes in, you know, the Washington, Village of Washingtonville codes do not reflect the current situation of, you know, how you're charging, um, and they would need to be updated. You know, if you're changing your, your method, um. You can, I believe, and Mary Beth is the whiz on this. I believe you can over, you know, re- over-revenue your budget for water and, and use that. Whereas you can't for your wastewater budget. You need to keep that one tight. You can't send that over to general fund. But you can, um, have a fund for future maintenance and future, you know, if your operation and maintenance budget is, is over what you actually expenses are for a year, you can establish funds for water and for sewer that you can use for emergency operation and maintenance type things. Um, so you're not.
Yeah, what Tracy's saying, excess revenue from, from water income can be spent on things other than water.
Yeah, well, that's what, yeah.
They, they can go to general.
Had told us that, I, I, I believe at our first meeting with, with.
Yeah, but not sewer. Sewer can't. Um, but for either one, you can, at some of this charge of operation and maintenance, um, you can establish a, a fund. So, you know, put a little bit away in a specific fund to have available to fix a water main break or, or something like that.
Right, because right now we have two wells that we're drawing water. We're going, starting the part five at the Memorial Park.
Great.
Well.
Farmers' well, for supplemental source.
Yes, uh, and we have two more that we need to look into. You know, w- we've been paying these wells for the past eighteen years. Um, never got anything out of it, so now it's time to see what they're made of.
Yeah.
Well, your Fire and Memorial Park wells, that's ready to go. It just has to be updated, the sampling has to be updated and the health department has to come out for inspection.
Yep.
But you're saying it's going to be a month and a half, two?
By the time you get the, I'll say two months. I mean, by the time the paper, the, the lab results are, are, um, received and health department goes through its procedure, which their local health department's great to work with, they'll, especially for, you know, an emergency source, supplemental source, they'll, they'll bend over backwards to help you out. So you know how these things work, it just is, there'll be some type, there might, you never know what. The key is getting finding the results in this, um, the water quality lab results to see if, if any levels have gone up and need to be mitigated somehow, so.
And that would be very helpful for the water situation right now.
Give you some, some redundancy, some resiliency, yeah.
Um, we could sleep better at night. That's what Mike said. You could sleep better at night if it's a swell. Okay.
But just in terms of the.
After four hours.
I'm sorry, in, in terms of the rates, these were modeled on a past budget. Um, the idea is the same. Your budget divided by your water use from maybe the previous, you know, segment of billing, that's a method that can be used going forward. So I don't think I would take these specific numbers. These are an example of how you can change your water and sewer rates to, to better meet your budget and meet a future debt. And I can redo this, um, this appendix D table with the future debt, as you just told me, five million at zero, five million at two, and see what that.
I could get, I could get the exact numbers as of today.
Yeah.
Which aren't going to be that much different by the end of the month.
Well, what we're looking at is the annual. So what you're going to have to meet for the next thirty years, that's what we want to be calculating on. So if you have that information, great. And in general, I can just run it really, really quickly with five million at zero percent and five million at two and see what comes up, see how this, this table changes.
Okay. Um, well, it's the beginning of, of the discussion, so, um, any questions?
Looking for public hearing dates or?
I don't think yet. Yeah, uh, the next meeting that we have, uh, it probably going to be another Zoom meeting, unless we could somehow change that, would be July twenty-first. Is that giving you enough time, Tracy?
Oh, I can, in the next couple of days, I can get you just the updated numbers for future debt, just to see what that happened, what happens to the facility charge. Um, yeah, I can just send you that, the separate, you know, pages separately so that you can have that. We can just make it as an addendum or something to that.
You're, you're estimating how, how, how many, seven, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year annual payment? That's, that's for principal and interest? So you divide that by your number of units for. No, it's actually more twenty, the number, total number of units are twenty-eight hundred.
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven. So that's an annual facility charge of a hundred and fifty, one hundred and fifty-five dollars, divided by four, that's, that's a quarterly charge of just under thirty-nine dollars.
Okay, so it's up.
It's up, but it's not that, it's not that sixty-five per quarter.
Sixty-five.
Yeah.
Now, do we want to look at commercial rates differently than residential?
A lot of municipalities do. It's, um, it's definitely something that can be done because the benefit of the user is greater than just a residence. Um, restaurants use water to produce food and, you know, clean dishes and they're selling a product that relies on the use of the benefit of water and sewer. Um, other commercial zones, the same thing. So, um, some municipalities that I've seen lately, they might charge one point two-five times the charge for water on a residential property. That would be one point two-five times higher on the commercial or one point five. And it really, you don't have to look at your own budget, what your commercial facilities actually are, um, and how you need to meet your, your budget. But there's, you know, plenty of things you can look at in, in those terms and it, and it is in line with making sure that the bill reflects the benefit that, that receiver gets.
Right. Right.
How would that?
Yeah, I don't know how that's going to really work out with the program.
If you have a, let's say, an apartment house and a business.
Mixed use, you have mixed use here.
Yeah, you know?
Yeah, we have one, one building that has commercial underneath and residential above.
Well, maybe it's three rates. There's only two meters.
A lot of times you might, you might have a rate for the first, I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing arbitrary numbers out for discussion sake. The first five thousand gallons for, for quarter is, is one rate. Then if you start exceeding that, it's an additional, it's kind of like a progressive.
Yeah, Mike, there's one written up for seven thousand as a basic usage minimum for charge and above that.
Okay.
And it really depends on how many commercial facilities you have, what type are they? Does it make sense in your system to have a separate or a surcharge for commercial?
Insurance office, small insurance, they're not going to use anything. A couple of times a day, make coffee.
There were, in some instances in the billing that I looked at, I, I think the billing information needs to be updated. It didn't look like all of the commercial was reflected as commercial in your system now. So I, I think there's going to be a need to update the data on property. in your system now, so I, I think there's gonna be a need to update the data on properties. Um, it would be a good time to do that if you are changing your, your billing rates.
Well, all right, we got a lot of work to do.
That's, but i- in, in the program, you'd be maxed, just commercial, residential, it's just, it's just identifying as commercial, residential. It's not.
Right, what I'm saying is that right now, they're not correctly identified.
Right, you're, I agree, you're right.
Well, all right, thanks for giving us the work, um.
No, you're, I mean, oh, no, you're pretty.
I think you're not, yeah, you're, you're not.
Do you ever have where the residential rate is one, and then the commercial has different levels, like small commercial versus the larger?
Yeah, there, there are some places, if you have large users of, of water, they'll, they'll the village code, or, you know, the, the municipality will specify, this is a small user, this is a large user, and those folks will be charged for commercial at, at a different rate.
Yeah.
Again, you're, you're getting a benefit from using more water, you should be paying for that.
Schools.
Yeah, I'm looking at a school versus an insurance agency, or a small diner, or, you know, whatever, small cafe.
Yeah, and schools can have a problem too, because sometimes they're, they're assessed at how, how many square feet, they're gonna be huge. Um, you might wanna be looking at things that are closer to usage, how many students? And I've, I've seen some commercials. Yeah, not now, but they're not using water, right? And that's gotta be hard for you guys to meet budget too, it's gonna be different, yeah.
Way.
Yeah, so, and I have seen some municipalities that charge commercial, um, commercial facilities with ten employees or less get charged at this rate, and then commercial facilities with ten employees or more get charged at this rate. And again, that's related to use, you know, how, how much, how much sewer are you actually sending out every day?
Right.
But that's the thought process, yeah.
The more use you have, the more revenue, that's what Tracy's saying, so you've got re your homes, I don't know how many more homes are, are to be built out there, but.
Seventy-two, that's a big total.
Yeah, so that spreads out the cost.
Right.
It's not a windfall, but you're gonna, yeah, and, and, uh, right, it spreads out, yeah, the, the cost isn't really gonna increase that much, you know, the, the additional amount of electric and chemical is not going to, uh, mean you have to adjust your rates for it. So you're gonna just bring in, what, what you're getting from them is just gonna be beneficial in the perspective of additional revenue.
How do you, um, rate residential property that's being rented out? Is that commercial, could that?
That's done differently as well, I think I've seen, like, a single-family home that's rented out by somebody who's had to move because their father's ill, those don't really make much sense, it's, you know, one, but if you've got a large complex, a lot of what happens is it's charged as commercial, there might be one meter, and the landowner or the property manager will just divide that among all of, all of their people. Um, so then is that commercial, or is that residential? Because you're still charging an individual home user.
Right.
So that really depends on what.
That we have to really discuss. Yes, it's something that, okay, the board has to come up with, um, answers to those.
Yeah, and you know, we're available, we can help.
Rich, anything?
No.
Val?
Nope, I got it.
Paul?
No.
Okay, um, we'll talk later on this week, Tracy, I'll send you all that information, I'll get it from our financial. All right.
Yeah, and this one I can rework really quickly, just so you have that on hand.
Good, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't get the memo, or I would have worn an orange shirt.
I said the same.
Joe's red, I'm orange, Joe's red.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's red, it brings out my eyes.
Perfect.
Uniform, uniform for the meeting.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, I'm gonna cut out then, nice to see you all, and, um, have a good week.
Be well, thank you. Uh, one other announcement I wanted to make, uh, we did not win the hometown.
Takeover, yeah.
Takeover, however, um, I, I can't say it, Larissa, so you could say the town that did win.
Wetumpka, Alabama.
Yep, that's what I would have said too, uh, but we did make the feature promo. So we'll, we'll send that information out tomorrow, I'll post it, um. It's the two fire trucks with the American flag at the corner of Ahorn and Washington, and it's just before they go into their show. So it was pretty interesting to see, um, just how many people we had there, so. Maybe they didn't wanna fly north, that's how I'm looking at it.
Too cold in the winter.
Too cold in the winter. Okay, make a motion to, uh, any other comments, questions? That discuss, we wanna discuss?
I have a question, any, uh, any idea when the planning boards are gonna start meeting?
I wanna meet with them this week, okay, just to introduce each other to them, um, reach out to them by Wednesday, all right, and I think we have to come up with two dates for them, but, you know, they will have to be on that page, so they're gonna create that page.
Okay, do you wanna do Zoom, a Zoom, you want me to set it up for you?
I think we could do it here in the building.
Okay, spread out.
Keep that distance.
Okay.
All right, um, Valerie, I don't think you heard Deputy Mayor Lang, but he's very hurt. I love something about, we had to weigh in as something, and, um.
It was words, words.
Yeah, but the words hurt, words hurt.
I'll never say the W word again.
Um, and Rich, you were brought up also, so it was the three of us, so I think, um, it could be a gender thing too now.
Speaking of W words, um, are we supposed to talk about water restrictions, or no, that, that was just?
Uh, it was just something that we were kicking around, I think this next week, we're supposed to get a lot of rain, the rain that we did have the other day helped us out a lot.
Okay.
Think we could talk about, uh, volunteer restrictions? Um, I could just put that out there with some ideas of how to conserve some water.
Okay.
Believe we could, um, get the wells online, get these wells online, and we don't have to go to a, um, restriction, like, I believe South Blooming Grove has a restriction. I don't know if Blooming Grove has, because everyone has their own wells.
People have their own wells, I think, just do what they want, I think, yeah, yeah.
Where, uh, where are we supposed to talk about, uh, Larissa with the, I mean, I have to tell you, especially the uh, discrimination and harassment, the seminars?
Yeah, you wanna bring that up?
Sure. August, yes, uh, Stacy Yomans from Nymer, she will join us, uh, for our work session in August. Um, but there are a couple of different options that we can do, there are, uh, there's a Zoom, and there are four dates that we can pick from, or you can do a, um, a live workshop. So you could do a live workshop, or you can go into their online university and, and, um, pick the work, you know, pick a workshop and just do it online. So you can do it live or online, but she'll be here the first session in August.
Talking about all the employees, you're talking about all the employees.
Employees, right, for everyone, now the police station, they, they go through something already, right? Have to include them, because they have their own sexual harassment, or their own.
I believe they do, but we, we could find that definitely.
Yes, but if we're village employees, now, would you extend it to village board members? Um, not us, I mean, like, planning board, zoning board.
I think it's important that everyone that has something to do in village business.
Would they do sensitivity training?
Mike said he's gonna go through it also, right?
Please welcome the joint.
Oh, my God.
Awesome, so. She'll talk to us about the.
Is that important of a, is that important of a topic that we need to, um, address it, so she's looking at August third?
Correct, seven o'clock, from, if we're in village hall, we can do, uh, Zoom with her, with the computer hooked up to the, um, my, you know, the big overhead screen, yeah.
But she's not going to do the training then?
No, 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 she'll talk to us about the options, what we want, how, you know, we want our team to sign up, what's available.
What day is it?
August third?
August third, that's our first meeting of the, you're gonna be away, Val?
Yeah, but that's.
You're taking me with you?
So I guess you'll have to meet your family where they're going, huh? And, um, we have to, August eleventh, y- you're not here, right?
I'm not here.
When, when would you be returning?
Never.
Hopefully August twelfth.
Hopefully, August eleventh at four thirty.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so, you know, let's discuss it further, August third, and, um.
What was August eleventh, that was one of the dates of training? What was August eleventh?
You.
Oh, what was that?
I just wanna make sure you're gonna be okay, Paul. Care about you. I do, Rich does, Larissa does.
Thanks for weighing in on that.
Yeah, thanks for weighing in. Any, any other comments, concerns? I said it before in the announcements, I just wanna thank all of you for all the work that, um, keeps the village going, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you've been doing.
Non-stop.
Thank you, Val.
I think you're white. Look like.
She's gonna mute her.
Gotta sign bills.
We're gonna rename him the Energizer Bunny Rabbit, just keeps on going.
Now I'm a bunny, now I'm a bunny. We're not using the W or the B word.
No W's, no Bs.
Good bunny.
I think I have giant rabbits.
Giant rabbits, yeah. Okay, goodnight, everyone.
Let's get out of here.
Goodnight.
Bye.